You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Homework.
Yeah. I included a map just showing where these three areas are. Now, part of the asset management program, I gave you guys or will give you guys an updated gigantic spreadsheet with a lot of summary tables. And these tables are, the inventory tables are in our GIS and the staff has access to all that. The tables can be updated in our GIS and exported to Excel. I've just found this the most convenient way to share information. Everybody has Excel. Your vertical inventory overview. Of course, you have the wastewater treatment facility built around 1980. Big upgrade in 2000. A new emergency generator in 2016. And a phosphorus removal system was added in 2006. And these are all approximate dates.
Is that system in failure or is it just the regulations have changed?
No, I don't think it's-
For the phosphorus?
Yeah, I don't know that it's in failure. I think the issue is that it's a limiting factor for your wastewater treatment facility. The phosphorus system can handle about 80,000 gallons per day. And your treatment facility is sized for 119,000 gallons per day max month. And you are, you're approaching that, you have approached that max at times. So we're starting to bump up against a flow limitation. And we also have this phosphorus removal limitation.
So we're bumping up against the 119? So we're exceeding the capacity of phosphorus all the time with something?
Right, exactly.
What's our, what's our mean, what's our, what's our norm?
We're really close to buying that mass state. Right? We're close to buying that mass and that's 80 and then what happens?
The max flow is 119. You can come within, I think, 34,000 gallons of that. So close.
But on average, what's our norm? What would drive that, in other words? If we're below the, what drives that spike on occasion?
Well, that's, we're not sure about. It could be that you've got some ionized system and that's why I'm recommending the CCTV and the inspections. So if it's happening during months where you have a lot of rain, that might be what it is.
People put some pumps into their sewer.
Well, that, yeah, if people have their some pumps connected to the sewer. That would certainly would do it.
You'll find out when you do a smoke test.
Not in this-
Smoke up the house.
Yeah. Yeah. That's exactly right. So probably a smoke test would flush that out.
Slight issue. We are doing a lineup program to start treating the phosphorus as well. So that's kind of like, well, see. Yeah, I always tell them to run it in there.
All right. Oh, yeah. You also had an energy audit done that was the final revision day on that. So 2023, so very recent. And the main recommendation on that one was that two of the blowers at the Laboon facility are equipped VFDs and one is constant speed. So the recommendation was put a VFD on the constant speed blower. But I would imagine when the wastewater treatment facility evaluation is done, they're prob, one of the things they're going to look at is the size of the blowers.
The acronym spelled out. Put a VFD.
Oh, sorry.
Frequency drive.
Yes.
I was asking for going. Well, exactly.
And you were, that's.
And Jimmy, everybody else knows how to make it.
I'm not really proud of no one.
It wasn't even very high frequency drive. It starts to bump up slower, so it's not a big start.
Okay, right. It matches the speed of the, to the system conditions to conserve energy.
That speeds up, sort of sound.
Yeah, but it touches that. It only uses the amount of electricity instead of just blowing.
Right, instead of just charging ahead. All right. Other vertical inventory, by the way, by, I didn't explain this, I don't think, but by vertical inventory, I knew things like your wastewater treatment facility and your pumping stations. And then horizontal is your gravity and your gravity mains, your manholes, your bore's mains. Bearing stuff versus above the ground stuff. So you've got the Spring Street injector station. That's original to around 1980. And pretty much everything is original according to the information I have, but no, no complaints as to how it works. You know, it's, it's performing, it's doing okay, but probably something to keep an eye on because it's, it's getting up there.
Yeah, we made some improvements there this summer, or this spring.
Oh, did you?
Sorry. Operated the electrical panel.
Okay, good.
Put no winch on the guided those down. And some safety features, ADP tools. Big safety features.
Yeah.
Definitely, I'll do.
I'll get to this a little bit later, but you know, one of the things we do in this asset management program is to kind of rank the assets by their importance. And I always rank safety the highest.
Sounds.
Yeah. I used to work at a battery manufacturing facility and there were some gnarly injuries over there. So it's, it's always on my mind. The Wilson Pond Road Pumping Station and the Route 32 Pumping Station, they're part of the North Swansea system, which was built around 2007. So, you know, they're, they're in pretty good shape. The only items there that were coming to the end of their useful lives were the gas detector and the chart recorder because those are short-lived assets. And you guys actually might have replaced those already. It just, you know, wasn't in my notes. But those are in good shape.
They have new roofs too, this spring.
She brought my pen with me to be writing these things down.
Can pass those to you?
Hold on, so we're not-
Okay, good. I can change the table then. The energy evaluation included the pumping stations and he didn't have much to recommend. He just said to adjust the wear and plate clearance. And he's referring to the pumps there. All right. Critical assets and priority projects. So when we set up these inventory tables and start populating them, we assign an impact of failure score. Like how important is this asset? What bad thing will happen if this asset fails? So like I said earlier, the safety stuff, I usually give a five to railings and braiding and, and that sort of thing. The gas detector, even though it's small, it's important. And then the probability of failure is informed by the condition of the asset. That's kind of the first thing we look at if we have that information. And the age and material of the asset. And also the performance, like is it sized correctly? You know, is it able to do its job? And these all go from on scale of one to five. And we do one to five because it aligns with the pipeline assessment certification program, which is if you have a contractor come in and see some TV or gravity mains, they're going to assign a score to what they're seeing down there from one to five. One being in great shape, five being a very serious defect. So when, when you get that done, you get that information back, it'll, you can enter it into your tables and it will make sense. Probability of failure. So the probability of failure, I go by conditions for if I have it. And if I don't, I base it on remaining useful life. So an asset that has exceeded its remaining useful life gets a probability of failure of five, which is, you know, bad.
The injector on Spring Street, how did you know that? Or how would you look at that?
Well, that one, I, I didn't give it as high of an impact of failure as the pumping stations because it serves, you know, it doesn't serve as many people. So that one, I gave that a lower impact of failure, but a higher probability of failure because of its age.
At forty plus years, is that normal?
Oh, yeah, definitely. You know, I think the mechanical components, the mechanical components, if you get forty years out of those, you're doing, you're doing well. And we multiply just two together, the probability of failure and the impact of failure to get a risk score. And then you can use those to rank your assets from the highest risk to the lowest. We can also plot these on a criticality chart. So the first chart is just clean without any, anything on it, so you can read it. But the next chart, I plotted all your assets on it and it looks like little, you know, dandruff herpes or something, but it just kind of gives you the general drift about your system. And, you know, a lot of your assets are in that limited monitoring section, which is good. They're in good shape. They're not, you know, they don't have a high impact of failure. And that's because so much of your collection system is new. I mean, North Swansea is your newest system and it's also your largest. So, and gravity mains and manholes, those are very long-lived. So even everything in West Swansea by age would kind of fall into that lower risk category. The things that are kind of up in the priority renewal area and the highest risk are mostly in your vertical assets because those tend to have shorter useful lives. So these are items at the wastewater treatment facility and Spring Street. All right, so I estimated the replacement cost of your wastewater treatment system and I came up with almost $52 million. Is that surprising to anybody?
Wouldn't have had a quote, but you should have made us guess.
I should have. Next time I'll bring the dry those. And I just, there's a pie chart below that. I also ranked this by, you know, highest to lowest. So North Swansea is the biggest one. West Swansea, the collection systems are usually the big dollars. And of course, the wastewater treatment facility. Now, the way prices are these days, I was talking to a colleague today and he's like, I was asking him questions about how do I price these things right now? And he said, I'm not very good at estimating right now. I said, nobody is. So I can take another look at these before I finalize the report, but the prices are just crazy. The shooting's great until you have.
And a sewer system, are there water, are there flow meters like there are water systems?
Not typically. You could put, I mean, you could put them on a pressure vein. And you could actually put like a flume on a gravity pipe. But that's pretty expensive to do. Like you'll see a flume and like a meter of all, like a manhole. And then there's a flume in there with an ultrasonic level transducer and that's how it measures flow.
Don't think I asked the question correctly, but with a typical home with water, sewer, there's a water meter in the home or the business.
Right.
Is there anything like that? So we're just stuck with black ratings?
Not necessarily. A lot of utilities will bill sewer based on water use. I actually worked at it.
They'll have a way to measure it, so.
You don't have a way to measure, you don't have a, an accurate and cheap way to measure.
They have no way to measure.
Right.
Because we, you don't, we don't control the water.
And I see.
In West Swansea, it's, it's also, it's kind of factored into the rate though. Because in North Swansea, they use the water meter use. And then factor in the rate for basically the summertime. Because some of the water is not going into the sewer system. But at the one time, pretty much all of the sewer system, you know, you set your rate, the rate is not saying it's water, it's different. Those are norm. Yeah, but how do you, why doesn't you measure west? That's what you just have to make, you know, that's a black use per metric. Because I think it's an EPA number, right? For using true door, that you can use.
Well.
Find your way.
Obviously, you know what's coming in because you're measuring at the treatment facility. How do you allocate it? I mean, a number of ways. If you don't have water bills to call back on. I know, I came from a wastewater utility in Florida and initially we, we base it on tables in the health code. So, you know, if you're building a new single family home and you want to put an septic tank on it, there's a table that tells you how size that septic tank and what the estimated flow would be. And it's always higher than what it is in real life. But if you're kind of allocating it to everybody rather than, you know, just saying, well, this is, this is the flow and this is the cost based on that flow. It's, it's, it's an only way to do it. Of course, metering water is the best, if you can. Is there no water service in West Swansea or is that?
So, uh, PVC.
Okay.
But the bigger apartment buildings have meters on them.
Okay.
Their sewer charge is based on single bed, that's pretty much your office flat fee.
Okay. And so one of the things we did as part of this asset management program is schedule out when each of your assets are gonna need to be replaced. And this is, you know, this is an estimate based on what we think the estimated useful life of the asset is and when it was installed. So I came up with this schedule and there's a table called 10-year look ahead and that's a summary of that schedule. And this isn't, you know, this isn't carved in stone. It's an estimate. And you can get out there and start gathering information about the condition. You're gonna find maybe some things you thought were in great condition have problems now, or something you thought, boy, this thing's gonna be a mess. It's fine. So when you can really start to nail this stuff down is when you're doing condition assessments. And just looking at it. That's the CCTV inspections, the manhole inspections, things like that. And I kind of explain that on the next slide. Why do I call it look at? It forms the basis for identifying when existing assets might need attention. It does not anticipate expansions or upgrades due to growth or process changes. And, you know, that would apply to the wastewater treatment facility. You're gonna have that evaluation done. You know, there'll be some pricing and recommendations in there about what you might need to be looking. I came up with an estimated, it actually should be 3.3 million. I typed 3.2. And it's 3.3 million in estimated replacement costs over the next 10 years.
For the whole system?
Everything. I made some assumptions to arrive at that number. Costs assume full replacement value are in $20, $24. It's based on estimated end of useful life, like I said. Condition might influence that. Capacity might influence that. The actual cost, I think, is likely to come in lower. You're gonna find a lot of your assets are still in serviceable condition despite their age. And repair renewal costs can come in lower than full, will come in lower than the full replacement. You might find it's feasible to line some of your gravity mains in poor condition. And that's maybe a half to two-thirds the cost of the whole thing. So.
A lot of those are beyond work.
Probably, so the estimate on that is 50 years. Yes. Yes. But a brand-new PVC main would be 75 years. So you have to do the, you have to do the math. Mining is good if you have a lot to do. And you don't want to tear up everywhere in town and you need to save something.
Nobody needs to do that.
Everybody. I also did a 100-year look ahead. That might sound crazy. But some of these assets are very long-lived. A precast manhole might have a life of 75 years. PVC gravity main might have a life of 75 years. Ductile iron, 85. If you have any cast iron out there, that stuff lasts forever, 100 plus. So sometimes this is useful. In your case, your, your big pumps are a few decades out. If you say you had a lot coming due for replacement in 2034 to 2043, that would be good to know. Because, you know, in the upcoming years, you'll be making decisions about rate setting and financing projects. You know, do we pay off, do we lower rates when we pay off our loans? Or do we start rolling into the next round of projects? So it's, it's handy for helping you see what's over the next year.
So when you look at the 3.3 for three, three services, the bulk of the 3.3 is in West Swansea because it's the, it's the aged system. What do we have in reserves?
That's probably a better answer by Michael, but I think looking at your 2023 financials, it was 120,000 was the fund balance?
No, more.
More than that?
We have a few different capital reserve funds. Sort of fund balance I thought was supposed to, not interested in the sewer fund.
I mean, it's not for the whole system, yes. The sewer fund is for the whole system. And then each individual is one for north, there's one for west. And then there's one for expansion, that's for capital reserves. There's a few different. I can try to find some involved on.
Okay, so financial planning. Ensure staffing is sufficient to complete monitoring, maintenance and AMP update tasks. I, I believe you have all the staff you need right now. You've got the operating company. Scott Self is on the phone with us. I hope he's, that are just helping out.
That's a silent appreciation observer, I hope.
Yes. Established adequate asset renewal budget. The next 10 years, like I said, this asset management plan only covers existing assets. You're gonna have the wastewater treatment plant evaluation, so there might be some upgrades and changes there. Full replacement cost over 10 years, 3.3 million. If we assume, you know, half of that, 1.67. I put in a number for condition assessment for West Swansea and I envision to doing a third of the system each year for three years. And I estimated that would cost about 45,000 total, so roughly 15,000 a year. It can be chief insurance. If you've got, you know, if you do your inspection, you find, oh my gosh, I have a gusher. You know. Good to take. And of course, request to upgrade the wastewater treatment facility to be determined.
It's not part of the 3.3?
Not part of the 3.3. I have no idea. So the overall operation of the asset management program, this might sound like three, so feel free to ask questions. But the town purchased the ArcGIS software. We mapped the system, provided it to the town, populated the inventories. And those are all on the town's ArcGIS online account right now. And they are linked to some electronic forums which are made in an app called Survey 123, which is part of ArcGIS. I don't know if you guys are using those.
About this time.
So is that something where we could identify the structures by age?
Yes. If you, like, you can click on a manhole and get a pop-up. And it gives you all the information about that particular. Or you can query, you know, if you want to say, well, what's the aggregate of our manholes? You can do that too. So ArcGIS Pro is the desktop software. And that's, that's probably the best place to update the inventory files and export to the financial planning spreadsheet. Story maps and dashboards, I explained earlier. These are for internal communication, but I think mostly staff will have access to ArcGIS. So probably that will mostly be used for public outreach. And the financial planning spreadsheet, that's where all the tables in misrepresentation came from. All the tables in the report, the charts, the criticality graph. All that's, all that was from querying this spreadsheet. So next steps, of course, is the wastewater treatment facility evaluation. An evaluation of the West Swansea system, CCTV inspection, the structure inspection. An evaluation of the West Swansea system, CCTV inspection, the structure inspections. And then use that information to update the inventory, identify projects. And at some point, uh, there will need to be capital improvement plan and a rate study. To figure out how to pay for all this. All the needed asset renewals.
What's the timing of, but we've known this for a couple of years. But what would be the timing of putting that together? The rate study and capital reserve plan. What would be?
Well, I mean, I don't think. You'll wanna get the wastewater treatment facility evaluation done first. Then, then you know what projects you have to do there. Um, in the meantime, you can do the CCTV inspections at West Swansea. See what's going on there and see what projects you might have to do in that area. And then you can, you know, you can schedule these out. And once you know, and you know, when you're doing sewer projects in the road, most people, of course, wanna combine them with. Roadway and paving. Or if you have other assets that you're responsible for, like stormwater and need upgrades, you wanna do all that at the same time. So most people aren't gonna say, oh, this gravity main is in the worst shape. They're gonna say, well. If gravity main is in okay shape, the road is in terrible shape and the drainage is in the worst shape. So let's do this area first. So it's not necessarily driven by just one asset. You know, it's like, okay, what does it make, make sense to do? With everything taken together.
I understand the, the need to know that information to build a capital reserve plan. But what I don't understand is why wouldn't we just be implementing a rate study? So we're, cause that, 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 that's immaterial with regards to what our needs are. That, that's trying to obviously balance the revenue. That need to have in the capital reserve. We already know we need to raise three point three million. Over the course of the next ten years, something like that. So we've got a basis to start with. They know our connection fees are grossly inadequate. So why, why wouldn't we look at those while all this other studying and think?
I mean, you could. Um, so when we do rate models, we incorporate. The, you know. A planned capital improvements and we'll take. You know, we'll take, say, half of. You know, the ten-year value, like I was talking about here, and incorporate that. In the asset management program too, and also building reserves. So you could, and you know, I think a rate study should be done every five years at least. Because this is, like I said, it's a conveyor belt. It's always gonna be coming. And rate studies are. I don't know what we charge for those now, but. They're not, i- i- in the scheme of things, they're not that expensive. And if you've already got one, then it's just a matter of updating. And when we do them, we run scenarios too, so. Maybe like best case, worst case, likeliest. You guys are interesting because you have the, the three different systems.
Very, very different rates and different rate structure.
Very different. I actually read, uh, it wasn't a rate study per se, but it was kind of a review of your rates. It was interesting.
Glenn Page was the sort of mission chair for many years, matured bill, I'm infected with the same, maybe you come in during the budget review every year and say. West Swansea has some of the lowest rates in the state and North Swansea has some of the highest rates in the state. He always told us we had plenty of money to, sure, that's coming for mission, but the other part was, right? And I did, I was able to check. The store fund has over eight hundred thousand dollars. The north capital reserve fund has over four hundred thousand and the west is over two hundred, so not millions, but. More than in South Africa.
With some engineering. How do we determine hitting the, the max level at the West Swansea plant? What, what kind of steps can we take to try to understand why that's happening? And the reason I'm asking, we, we know we've got somebody who's interested in having a, I would not evaluate so how is it? Where they can't connect, but if they worry, the only reason I understand they can't connect is phosphorus. So the, oh, it was my answer. So phosphorus comes under control. They still can't connect because we would exceed on those peak days, we would exceed our capacity, if I understood you correctly.
Possibly not. But, you know, that might be as simple as doing some repairs out of the system.
But we're, we're looking at, that show had something like. Yes, we're doing, we're doing the pilots, pilot study and we're doing the facilities. Then your, your points are good, but I think there were someone outside the store, but it's specific aspects.
I hope, Marv, so Marvin's got such a level of knowledge and a broad range of experience. President, you're trying to keep asking to get the answer you're looking for. Oh, this is, this is great. You've done a phenomenal job. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. A lot of good information, man.
Spent a lot of money.
Leave before you have some more questions or homework assignments.
Thank you very much. All your work. Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Fire station two water damage?
This is mainly informational based on the amount of money we're looking at, but that's, you know, some water issues down there and nothing new, but. Uh, two areas in the meeting room have suffered some pretty significant, um, damage. So we got a quote from. File with the private, they said it's probably deferred maintenance. Uh, so not something that I'd ever, the, adaptable at least. For this phase, it's, the effect was more than what we're looking at anyway. So not a big deal, I suppose, um. But, so we're looking at try state, remove the dangerous area and evolve this in there. And then the next phase will be to figure out what goes back. Hopefully identified. It was, you gotta take it apart and then kind of leave it so you can hopefully maybe diagnose, uh, what's causing the water damage. So. That's all we're doing at this point, but where there's, there's going to be some cost to this, put it back.
Just a problem for very funny. I mean, both of these asks is six hundred dollars to three hundred dollars. Yeah, that was really long. I thought it's gonna be three thousand, four thousand about. So it's going to make four hundred dollars. Yeah. I mean, so. I just surprised at that quarter and it's a no brainer. We just gotta, gotta take a look behind the wall, see what's going on. And then we can value it and something's good.
What was the reason then with the bird that wasn't reported on the item? Well, no, I think it was, wasn't it because you said it was groundwater, right? Ground, you were there with the insurance guy, I was there, I don't know. I believe you.
No, it said it was leaking for a while, so that's why the mold built up. And on behind the wall, it was leaking.
It's groundwater, groundwater, they don't.
So it was leaking quite, they would, but.
It's been going on for years. People want to be fixed, but what they, that whole eating well, physically. After we redid everything, started to redo it. A year.
I'd like to honestly, looking at it, I think, I think it's our best interest is to try. Something really more simpler to direct the water away from the building. Let's put some gutters in the back of the tunnel. And there, the drain, push the water away from the building versus. Mike wants to put roofing over those windows, but my thought is. The water's still gonna come up, that little roof would still come close enough to the wall and. So my thought is we should try some gutter out there. Get, that's a lot of roof you got. That's a lot of water coming off that roof. That's a big span that grabs all that water, you know? So if we put gutters and we put a gutter on the other piece. And we brought the drain bit down and we made the water run out into the back end line, fly the way, I think that would solve a lot of our problems, just. Trying that, which it isn't gonna happen, you know? But, uh, cause the water comes down very close and splashes up against it. I get the roof, but I think the roof is gonna be very costly, even at the latch. All under the shingles versus, let's put some gutters up there and say, we'll, we'll take it step by step and look at it. But I think that might be a good way to look at it right at the beginning.
The shovel will snow off the ramp and get thrown away from the building and stuff.
Correct. All that, that side, right? We need to get the water away from that back there.
Every margin.
Yes, sir. Would come hall furnishing, want the bird to, we can go sit in Jimmy's new chairs?
I'll get you that catalog. I think I got a lot of chairs first. We'll take a look at it. Like I said, there's a lot to, to check that I had learned about, cause I had about two hundred and fifty of them for the, for the, no, it's a big cost. But you know, they got some braces, some bolt, some static, little cushions, sewing.
What do you have in your old chairs?
I got rid of my, they were, they were just pushing down. Huh? The cover ones.
What about the old one? How would you rate, how would you rate the old ones?
I thought because of his retirement, but he didn't wanna sit on those chairs. No, okay. I made sure.
His old chairs better or worse than these chairs?
Oh, my chairs are much better than these.
The old ones.
Those are challenge play. Yeah. Mind of massages in the back.
And your old business?
Uh, did you want to do the mower? But I think the mower. So. The capital improvement program had thirteen thousand budget to purchase a new mower this year. Uh, the, the demo, the DPW demo of the new, uh, based their stand-up mower versus the, the sit-down. Uh, and I guess the crew was able to take it for a demo. They tried it, uh, they like it, it's a little cheaper as well. Uh, so we'd be looking for, uh, eleven thousand dollars from the highway and sanitary equipment capital reserve funds to purchase a mower.
Maybe if I stand it, they stand it, they pluck, they build them around. Our mower that we have now has been good.
Eleven hundred and fifty hours. It's sold on the municipal. Could be yours.
What do you do with the old one? Sell it?
Yep, we use a website called municipal. So it's like an auctioning website. They take ten percent. We've never had anything where we thought, we could have gotten more for that. It's always like, really? So it must be.
Is that right?
Land, trucks, that's a good one.
Do you like the motion in that? Yes, please. Make the one, send it through. Twelve hundred thousand. Twelve thousand second. Motion made in second, or paid in second, I, I, I said it. Straight up, Dave?
Uh, so we did distribute the May, uh, staff report. Get back to the, or the April, any bits of, or, uh, I don't mind, you probably maybe just go over some of the brief. Highlights for each, uh, department or division within town hall. Uh, so administrative assistant with Kamala's used twenty seven days in, in April and had seven paid rentals. Um, she also worked on coordinating event committee meetings, uh, which included the Northlands application for the upcoming years. Finance had the independent auditors for town, uh, in, for the twenty twenty three audit. And that included a single audit last year due to the significant federal funds received. Was a significant time commitment, both when they were, when the auditors were here, uh, preparing and after, so. Great job and expecting another successful audit.
Uh, are the issues that she referred to being resolved?
With the audit?
I was just with the software.
Finance?
Yeah. Her last sentence. It's like a thing for Steve or.
Oh, the nature retirement system. Uh. Yes, she's working on it. Yeah, so that's due to the nature retirement system. That's a state software. They have a system. It's, that's. Yeah, we're working, working on resolve those. I can, I can check in. I'm just curious. Yeah. Good question. Uh, tax collector, he did the annual leaning of unpaid twenty twenty three property utility bills, which totaled just under three hundred thousand. His duties as emergency management director, he attended a tabletop training. Uh, exercises at Suri Mountain Dam and Autobrute Dam, both. Uh, dam failures, which obviously is with our three dams, it's a good training for him to go to. The town clerk collected over about a hundred and sixty-five thousand of town vehicle fees and did nearly five hundred dog licenses. And they also had a demo with Avatar for, uh, motor vehicle registration software. It's the same software we use for taxes and assessing, so. If there's cross, we'll, we'll, we'll join the, join the avatar paper, which will help our ability to accept returns a little bit. Uh, human services, Edna mentioned that housing for, uh, people receiving assistance with low income continues to be a challenge, no surprise. Uh, she does a great job trying to find resources and opportunities. Has several long-term cases of elderly, mainly elderly residents on social security, very low incomes. Uh, mentioned that with all the housing being constructed is great, but really doesn't, uh. Generally serve these folks, at least without town systems. Uh, on the HR side, she mentioned that, uh, or she worked. She participated on the HR coordinator recruitment process, which led to a sirens, Sebastian Lickers, Lickers. Uh, he started a few weeks ago. And she also mentioned the new, uh, inventory, online tax reporting system, which was very challenging, but they, uh. They would not be defeated and they were successful, so.
She also mentioned that other towns, third party that. Is that something that just annual that we should consider? Or is this the one time?
Something we discussed, uh, by the time we realized kind of how problematic it was going to be, I think. Maybe a little league to do that. So I think that's something where Sebastian will be handling that. This year, that's something you wanna look at soon to see if there's something we wanna set out. Um, I was kind of surprised some of it, quite frankly, that wasn't something that helped us does where there are. Uh, public insurance provider, but they consider us self-insured through basically that being like the risk pool and like climate, so. Uh, yeah, I think it's worth looking at. So I don't think the costs outsourced are, are huge, it's a thousand dollars.
There's reasons like it was a challenge.
It was that some more.
I didn't let to it earlier, retired. It was that, it almost did, I think. Yeah, it was that, it was that and more.
Uh, so she has, uh, fully transitioned over and onboarding for Sebastian to, um, human services. Well, there, she'll be going to Parkland next month.
Correct. Yep, well deserved.
Yes, indeed, over ten years. Uh, planning department, we onboarded and acclimated for new town planner, had a pocket, it started in April. And we submitted, he submitted a project to the state's ten-year transportation plan, the project he talked about, uh. North Swansea for, or, or, uh, pedestrian improvements. And several items, as usual, were prepared and acted upon by the zoning planning boards and progress continues on several of the development projects in town. Code enforcement on town facility projects, Mike worked on the grain roof RFP, which was issued and then reissued. Uh, several items at the carpenter home, still some making progress on several zoning and site plan compliance issues, working with town council. Uh, so I think that's been going in the positive direction. It takes a lot of time. It's not easy, but he's been sticking with other councils.
Right, and we can, we can provide with some of the ongoing issues with the system board?
I think the, the use of town council has been, as I mentioned, has been promising.
How are we coming with the opportunity to expand? Those who are working with them to help them. At his daily, I think, we met on four or five months ago. How, how are we coming on that process?
Uh, ongoing.
Going toward a conclusion, so.
To be discussed further. Or yes, this.
Lot of help. Lot of help.
Appreciate it. Uh, health officer and worked on a housing complaint and two school inspections and also training on cyanobacteria and. A new lead law. Assessing that with the contract assessor and D R A, partner of our administration to prepare for the twenty twenty-four evaluation and assessment review. And she did an excellent job chasing down a number of outstanding timber and gravel tax items. And has been working with the contract assessor on abavements for last year, ever filed by May first. And will be responded to by July first. Now that the warrant's done, that'll be our next purpose to get those wrapped up, hopefully in the next week or two. Uh, recycling center, Josh has oriented several new staff members coming on board, spring facility cleanup. And working on marketing, selling various commodities. Police department, they made some improvements, the administrative office and booking room. Uh, new police officer. Correct, new police cruiser, excuse me. Uh, official promotion of Sergeant Clark, Knox Titus graduated from the National Police Academy. Six hundred thirty-four calls for service.
What's our roster now with, with people of, on short term? How many active do we have?
I would not wanna tread it, guess that up.
And how was the, the cyanide bonus? You see, so. How well can you try to bring new people in?
It has not been, it hasn't been, no statement, so. I think it's, I think that's one of the hard parts. Uh, fire department, we have the chief officer, the chief officer reorganization promotions. They had the annual works dinner, which several of us went to. And seventy-five calls for service. Public works, various sewer department items, preparing for multiple summer bridge and road projects. Spring cleanup and recreation has sweep up Swansea and their, uh, spring kick quality. And preparing, hiring and other, uh, accommodations for can and other activities.
I've called out.
Yes, sir.
We hear that from us, we're down at Thompson Bridge.
Out of this time, hopefully gets more financial info and put on next, next meetings.
For Spavens? Any public input before we go on down public?
Yeah, please. Six active.
I was gonna give eight, but six. If you have a job talent, there you go. Then we'll find next.
Uh, I'll just put our admin, but we mentioned Brownfield. Yeah, um, setting it up is on something like that. We talked about it, we didn't have it in the original scope, but I thought it'd be helpful, like, to machete over to have. And a wrap up presentation. Is that a good here or you think, would you like to see that at the planning board? Or they're more used to looking at it the same.
Sorry, be a Thursday night. Do a planning board meeting for the Brownfield. Wrap up before it goes, I guess, out of the bid?
It's not gonna be a bid yet. It's before we start. It's basically, no. It'd be just a, would you like it at a board, a select board meeting or do you like it at a planning club, which I, you know, I still need help with this. Just asking if you have a preference, Ben, yeah?
If you think the planning board has an opportunity to review it, like they would any other item on their agenda, so. If they can bring their expertise to it, I would be in favor of the planning board.
Very good. So I thought it made sense, but we're, I'm sure you agree. That's.
You did not public. Question I would have on this, who, who is running the?
So if it was a planning board meeting, planning board. When we got students and associates there, yeah, present this if they were feeling something.
Uh, hopefully we'll overcome the chairs by the people that are sitting up there. What's upstairs?
B Y, B Y O chairs.
What are we going in like for E?
E for consideration of pending claims.
Very.
Good for, good for you guys sticking with it. That was what they have.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Bye.